So we have called the meeting to order. We do have a forum here in person. We do have Maura dialed in through the phone in front of me. And as I said, we'll pass the phone around. Hopefully that will work well enough. She'll let us know if she can't hear us. Can we appoint a timekeeper? All right. Thank you very much for being our timekeeper. Sarah, do we need to call the girl here?
No.
Is that an online thing?
No, because you're here. But I'm just thinking, two people who are not here, Ben and Jill. And Maura is...
Maura's on the phone. Yeah, she's there.
That Nick.
And Nick.
And Nick is...
And Nick. Yeah, he's not on the phone as far as I can tell.
So he's not here?
Yeah, so Nick is absent. So that would be recording attendance. Bella, did we get any requests for public comment? I don't see it right here.
We did.
So that is for public comment. All right, so going into the votes. First, hopefully everybody got a chance to review the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September meeting. By Roger.
Second.
Second by Dawn. All in favor? Aye. Anybody against? All right, the motion passes.
I abstain.
And so many abstains.
That's so different. I'm trying to get this in here.
Do you want me to give you time to record it?
Just... Yes, please.
Well, let me know when you're done. And Maura, did you hear the motion?
Yes, I did.
What was... I'm sorry, you approved. All right. Yeah, Maura approves. Let me know when you got it, Sarah. So I'll turn it over to Leanna Glavine for the review of the audit report from the school year 21-22.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? So tonight, we're presenting the audited financial statements for our fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. So typically, we'll have a comparative from this year to the prior year, but due to some accounting changes that had occurred this year, we are just focusing on this single year of June 30th, 2022. I'm just going to scroll down here. I'm going to go over some highlighted topics on the financial statements. Okay, so the first report that we're going to talk about a little bit is the independent auditor's report. And just to highlight, this first section in the report is the auditor's opinion, which was an unqualified opinion, meaning it was a clean audit, no adjustments were made, and there was no findings. There are some recommended best practices, but we'll go over those in a bit. Further down in this audit report is the emphasis on matter, which is that accounting standard that we adopted this year for leases, which is also the accounting standard that is the reason why we're only going over one fiscal year as opposed to two. So this was a new accounting standard we adopted, and we'll go over several of the components of that throughout this report. So that's the opinion of the report. And then we're going to start to look at the individual financial statements. This is all just summary information. So here is the balance sheet. It's actually called the statement of net position. In corporate America, it's called the balance sheet, which is what I will always refer to it in my brain. So we start off looking at cash. So we have two cash accounts, cash operating and cash construction, and for a total of $9,188.69 in cash. So we ended up the year with a very strong cash position. The cash construction is reserved for the construction soft costs that we are incurring currently on the project. The next notable item you'll see on this report is capital assets net. You'll see that this is a much bigger number this year due to the purchase of the 199 201 forestry buildings. So that includes like a $13 million add for this year. Scrolling down to net position. So net position is basically our assets minus our liabilities. We have a very strong net position at the end of the fiscal year of $14,138,503. And please note that these statements are combined with our component foundation, the STEM soaring eagles. So STEM is in this column, the school is in this column for a total in the far right-hand Scrolling down to what I will always refer to as the income statement, but it's the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. I wanted to point out that our per pupil tuition was a very strong number at the end of the year, $15,361,300, which was a lot more than what we had budgeted. And then scrolling down, one notable item on the expense side was financing fees of $224,000. That's a one-time fee that was incurred due to the building purchase. According to government accounting standards, these types of fees are expensed in the year incurred, as opposed to in corporate America, they would have been added to the cost of the building and capitalized. And then just to note, changes in net position, this would be your net income in corporate America, we call it changes in net position. We had $21,500 in STEM soaring eagles, $1,150 in the school, for a total net position of $1,171,234. So it was a very strong fiscal year. Now, the statement of cash flows, this is just a different way of looking at what happened to your cash during the fiscal year. So it takes your operating activities, and then it adds and subtracts some non-cash... adds and subtracts some non-cash items, which are like your purchase... well, that's... your accumulated depreciation, amortization, things like that. And then it also subtracts your actual cash payments for things like capital assets, which were the buildings and computers and things like that. And then it takes into account your loan activity. So then our net change in cash for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022 is $168,547. Add it to the beginning of the year, $9,012, you get $9,180, which is that cash that we saw on the balance sheet previously. Then we get to the footnotes of the financial statements. These are all standard things that we have every year that just talks about the school in general and gives some information. Couple footnotes to highlight, cash construction, that is the cash account that we talked about for the construction project. They're considering this a restricted cash account for construction-related costs. So that's new this year. Scrolling down, we talked about the leases. So this is some more information about the lease accounting standard change, which we were required to adopt this current fiscal year. And we talked about the financing fees, that was $224,000. That is also new this year. And... Oh, okay. Now we're talking... now we're looking at the capital, the fixed assets. And new this year, obviously, is the buildings, $13,24,000 was added this year. And also new this year is construction in progress. Well, it's not so new, it was 69 at the beginning of last year, but we took a bulk of it this year, $448,000. Some more information about the leases. So the leases, just so you all know, we have a SPOC lease, which creates revenue for AMSA, and a cell tower lease, which is on T-Mobile. So those two create revenue for AMSA. And then we have two leases, which are on the expense side, which is for copy machines and Chromebooks. And I think those are the important things. Oh, and one last, the bond cable, this is also new this year due to the purchase of the buildings. We currently have about $12,000 drawn down on the bond with an availability of $24 million to draw upon when we get further into the construction project. Oh, and one other thing to point out, cumulative surplus revenue, this is a calculation that the auditors do every year to determine if the school would need to repay any of the tuition that we received throughout the year. And we are well within our limits, so that is good news. We won't have to pay any of that back to DESI. And this is the report again. And that's it for that financial statement. Now, I have two other things I want to highlight. So this is the report that the auditors write to the board of trustees, and it summarizes the audit process and any findings. So wanted to point out, there was no significant difficulties dealing with management, performing and completing the audit. There was no misstatements or disagreements with management. The school corrected the way it had prepared the end of the year report in the previous year. There was two small errors that they had documented in last year's report, so that was taken care of. And then they have some current year best practice recommendations. One of the recommendations was to review our procurement policy as we get closer to the $750,000 threshold for federal grants. So we will do that. They also recommended that we record the MTRS portion of our federal grants in revenue and expense for next year, which we will do. And then they just asked for us to break out the lease components a little bit further. Currently this year, they were like the interest expense was compiled with other, the mortgage interest expense. So they just want that broken out a little bit more. And then this year, new for this year, they did an audit of our technology, general controls, and they bulleted some recommendations for us in that area, just to protect our financial information a little further. That is it. That is it for that. Any questions on anything so far?
Just curious, what is MTRS?
Oh, sorry.
It's policy. Okay, got it.
Yep, Massachusetts teacher retirement system.
Got it. So the recommendations, how we report that. Was there something like a best practice recommendation around that?
Yeah, there was. So... Is that me? When we receive some of our federal grant money, there's a portion that goes directly to MTRS. And I was recording the net amount of the grant in revenue as opposed to recording the gross amount of the grant here and the expense side down there. So it's a net zero effect, but that was their best practice recommendation. Okay. Matt? Yep?
Not a question, but just sort of highlighting a couple of comments. First, congratulations on a clean audit. I know a lot of hard work to get there, again, with a clean audit. Also, you did elaborate a little more, but you did finance, that we carefully managed our grant recognition to stay underneath the $750 boundary. And if we had gone over $750, we would have more accounting and more work to be done. So great there. And you also, one thing that was mentioned in finance, you said during the year, one of the budget items was that we got a property tax refund from the city of our borough that we initially had not expected. So that would be another piece of good news for our budget for last year. Well done.
Thank you. I've got one more report.
I do have a question. Yes, thank you. I want a second. Just how clean all of it was done, I really appreciate it, the transparency. I do have a question that may be appropriate more when the finance committee is reporting out, which is around overall of our strategy and all these components of whether it's the bond and what we've entered into versus the loan on the buildings, plus what we're going to do for construction, and how all of these components play together, especially as our numbers have unfolded and we have a much better idea and less uncertainty around what it is that we're paying for. It would be nice to see just a report out on that strategy. I feel like I'm hearing piecemeal on the components, and I'd like to see a more unified, holistic story that we can all keep in our heads as you're starting to report out on some...
Yeah, November. That will be part of the special board meeting in November.
Perfect.
Yes. Alex Slime.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Also, too, on the financial statements that are uploaded into Board on Track, there are several different tabs on that spreadsheet. So there's one that talks about all of the construction in process and the loan amount and how far we've drawn down and all of those pieces, so.
Can I just add one more? I think the other thing that we've been talking about internally in the finance committee is like some reporting on a monthly basis. And so we're just kind of getting into that right now in terms of construction cost reporting. We also talked about, you know, refamiliarizing ourselves with the actual bond. And, you know, I think once we do this monthly reporting, that strategy will kind of come to fruition.
Thank you. Can I ask one question? And this is my first time. As part of all this, you said the per pupil tuition was more than budgeted. Just out of curiosity, was that because it was a very conservative budget? Did we... Were more students enrolled? I was just curious why it was more.
So our student enrollment stays at 966. But we have historically budgeted tuition at very, very conservative levels. And we usually will take last year's tuition and reduce it by 1%. So when this year's tuition, the actual came in. And keep in mind, for those of you who don't know, tuition bounces from quarter to quarter. We really don't have any idea of what our full year tuition is until the end of June. So we tend to budget very, very conservatively.
And just one thing to think about, you might find interesting, I know I did what I learned, was that every town pays a different tuition. And a lot, there's a component that we don't have to point to now, but I'm happy to go over. It's really fascinating to see. A lot of it has to do with individual town funding. And that flows to the AMSA.
Yeah, and it also, it's in particular, it's how much the sending district spent on education in the current year.
Above foundation.
Above foundation rate in the current year. So we track it, we give reports from state quarterly, and the tuition, are we persevering comes based on that? But we really don't know what our final tuition number is until June 30th or soon thereafter of the year that just passed, which is why we budget conservatively.
Well, yeah, knowing it's different for town, the percentage may be from our old old versus Clinton. Exactly. That's part of it, too.
And there's a true-up on June 30th. So you want to make sure that if they're, you know, clawing back any, that we have it for them to take.
Okay, there's one other report. Sorry, it's so tiny on the screen, but if you're interested, it's loaded on Board on Track for your reading enjoyment. But this is a report that the auditors prepare every year for us. And the first two columns are AMSA compared from 2022 to 2021. And then they do several charter schools, I think 30 charter schools in Massachusetts. So these other A, B, C, and D are other charter schools they picked out that they've audited that would most likely compare to AMSA. This is so tiny, but one thing that kind of is, was flagged on this report this year is our occupancy cost. If you look in the 2021, I know it's so tiny, we were at a occupancy cost per square foot at 24 in 2021. And due to the purchase of the buildings, we are now at 15, which more aligns with the other charter schools that they're comparing us to with charter school A at 12. B, you can't really look at because they're in the middle of this construction crazy project, I guess. But C is 11, D is 21. So much more in line. And then there are 30 charter schools, average is 18. So I think that purchasing the building was like a good thing for us numbers-wise.
And that includes the maintenance and, you know, everything? It's a fully loaded number, right?
Lees and, like Roger said, the real estate taxes and things like that. So that was one thing I wanted to highlight on there. And then the last little bit is... This report that they put together for us, these are different ratios based on, you know, our assets, our liabilities, our revenue, expenses, and so on and so forth. And the way this report works, it's like a spotlight. So green is good, everything green is good. Yellow would be, we would be in moderate risk. And then if there was anything in red, it would be high risk. And as you look at this report, everything is in green. So we are in really good shape. And then this is just the calculation of the, if there were any surplus that we would need to pay back to DESI. And as you can see, we're in a negative amount down here, so we are in good shape with that.
Can you also go over, I think this is also interesting, the number of months on hand that everyone has?
Oh, the cash, yeah, good point.
Yeah, I think current ratio is the one.
Is the closest to that.
Oh, yeah, there it is. It's five. Yeah. So this is 2022, this is 2021, and then these are school... this is school A, B, C, D. So you can see A is 2.76, B is 1.33, C is 2.58.
Months of...
No, it's a ratio. It's assets over liabilities. But, you know, it's, our ratio's the highest of all. I mean, the way I see it, we're in a great place of having that ratio be a large number because we're about to change that ratio by spending money on the buildings, right?
Yeah.
It's a good place to start. It would be a very different story if it was a low ratio.
I guess I just want to point out, the very last number is 4.19, which is off, which is off 30 schools. So our number is in line with the average.
Right. So...
Yeah.
So that reads, this is the number of months of cash we have on hand. So the bottom number is how much we spend in a month, profit and net.
Oh, it's monthly?
Yeah.
And the top number is how much, how much cash assets we have.
I thought it was a balance sheet thing, like current liabilities and the date, wasn't it? 1.9 million is our current liabilities?
Per month.
Per month?
Is that right? No.
No, that would be like 24 million.
I thought they did give us the...
I thought it was a monthly thing, too. That's why...
Well, the cash on hand would be different.
Oh, here it is.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's...
I see that.
Months of operating expenses.
Yeah. Good.
It's different than current ratios, yeah.
Yeah, so we're 5.42, last year 6.44. Then A through D. B is significantly lower, but, yeah. I'm not sure what's going on with D. They have 10 months on hand, but average all 30 is 5.99. Really solid financial year.
That's great. Thank you, Leanna. I know that's a stressful time, so.
Thank you, Leanna. First, let me echo what Roger mentioned and Sam and you mentioned, that, you know, thank you for a clean audit once again, and all the financial strength that you have just shown us just shows the discipline that we have had over the years, particularly recently with the buildings and getting ready for that. So hopefully, we can continue that discipline as we start spending that money to invest in our future, and that's what this is all about. So we're getting ready for things to get interesting at the school, and this shows that we are ready in a good way. It would be a very different conversation if we were in trouble. And then we have to start spending money on the buildings. So thank you. Thank you for viewing the team and all of the decisions that have led to this strong decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we put this up for a vote? Can I make the motion? Just so I read it? Because I think the wording is important.
Yes.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Sure. So we're going to make a motion to accept the representations of management and the expression of the opinions made by the AAF CPAs, which is our auditors, as embodied in the financial statements and independent auditor's reports for the year ended June 30th, 2022.
My second.
Bella seconds.
So...
Ro.
Ro, Bella.
Bella.
Yep.
Those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? Did Maura hear the motion?
Yeah, she said aye.
Ah, she said aye. So Maura's approved. All right. So with that, thank you again. The motion passes. We'll move on to a consent agenda. I think the only thing we have on the consent agenda is the financial statements, and this is just FYI, we don't need to vote on that. So that's part of your packet. I don't think we even had, the governance didn't meet in this month, so we don't have governance on the consent agenda. Which brings us to our executive director report, and I think maybe you'll include a capital campaign update, one that Maura's planning to get here, I think, soon.
Yeah, no, I've got some notes for Maura.
All right, I was thinking back as I was sitting there to March of 2020, and the first board report that I did from home, and I remember turning on the slides, and none of you were there, and feeling like, if no one's there, am I really even doing this or not? And then all of a sudden, we got used to it, and now this feels really, really strange to us. So in the past, I've kind of, kind of gone into the middle here and pointed at things, and so I'm going to try that again, and we'll see what it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Leanna. Leanna's going to help me. All right. So we're going to be looking at, once again, the MCAS update. This is new data that's just been released. MCAS information and scores have been sent home to families. We're going to look at the enrollment and attrition, the building update, capital campaign update. I will do a couple of the development items for Maura, and upcoming events, and a little bit of razzle-dazzle time. All right, MCAS, that's just my fancy picture. All right, so this comes right off the Department of Education website, it's all there, you can take a look at it. The only thing I've added is adding up the two percentages on the meet and the exceeds. This is 10th grade MCAS scores that we're looking at, which is the one that is the most important for those students, for their graduation purposes. There are obviously MCAS scores that go all the way through, and it's on the Department of Education website. And I was talking to Mike Murakie earlier, I recommend if you want to take a look at deeper dive at the middle school MCAS scores or anything else along the way, it could probably go through Ed Committee if they're interested in doing that work. We typically focus on the 10th grade part of that is because it is a high-stakes test for our students, but also because when they come into us in middle school, they're coming from all different districts, and they have not become part of the AMSA scoring or our curriculum. I am going to show you a comparison from the class of 2024, when they took their 10th grade MCAS, which are these, and then when they were 7th graders, so that you can see the growth... growth over that, over that time. A full dive into the MCAS could take hours, so that's why I thought if the ed committee wants to do that, they can. So taking a look at, this is, you know, literally copied and paste from, from their website. This is for English, so English language, and 86% of our 10th graders who are now 11th graders right now, 86% of them met or exceed, exceeded in English, and the state comparison was 58%. You may have read some articles, local newspapers on MCAS reporting, and also across the nation on standardized testing and the concern, obviously, around what some students have, have lost, and, you know, us, like everyone else, are still working on that. But we were, I was very pleased to see our, how well our students are doing comparison of the state. Can we take a look at the math ones? All right, and then these are our math scores. This is, once again, same thing, 10th grade, current 11th graders, this is their mathematics scores. 36% were exceeding 55% for a total of 91% meeting or exceeding. None of our students failed math or, or English. Next one, Leanna. All right, so this one, I, let's cover it up a little on top there. So this, what I, what I did here was I took the AMSA 2022 percentages, just really kind of summarized the other two that, that I put together for you, and then I took the state. So on our English language, as I said on the other slide, was 13% exceeded, 72% met. And then I next, there, there's the state. They were 9% exceeded and 49% met. And the same, and that's a total of 86 and 58. The math, 36 and 55%. And for the state, it was 11% and 38%. Our total exceeds and meetings is 91%. Math, as I said, 49% on the state level. And then I took the scores from 2021, just to kind of give you a side by side comparison, and so you can see where we are. So in 2021, the state, for the, this is the math, they were at 52%. AMSA was at 88% meeting and exceeding last year. We've gone up from 88% to 91%. The state has actually gone from 52 to 49. So that's why I put up those comparisons for you. One, you know, some things to keep in mind here is that when you're talking about, these are our current seniors, these are your current juniors, and so you're comparing different grades of kids, but it gives you, you know, some type of reference, which is why on another slide, I actually take the 7th grade scores and compare them to the 10th grade. But it, it kind of gives you an idea of where we're heading. I know the state is very, very concerned about their MCAS numbers, and we had a big meeting with the commissioner about it. But some things to, just to kind of consider, some good news, is that 2022, AMSA outperformed the state by 28% in English and 42% in math. And in 2021, we outperformed the state by 23% in English and 36 in math. And therefore, between the two years, the gap has actually grown by 5% that we have continued to improve and 6% in math. And we hope that those, obviously, those trends continue as our students move along. That said, one piece that jumped out to me was, okay, looking up at the English, once again, we're talking about 12th graders compared to the 11th graders, but our 12th grade students, when they took the English MCAS, 30% of them exceeded, and this year, 13% exceeded. So obviously, we want to increase the number of students who are in the meet category and pushing them into that exceeds category, and those who are needs improvement, pushing them up to meeting, and that's what we'll be working on. As a result of grant money we received after the pandemic or because of the pandemic, we did add an extra English teacher to the department, and that person is working in the 9th and 10th grade area, and that's to create some smaller classes, especially at the CP level, the college prep level, to make sure that the, the teachers have the ability to really give those students feedback more quickly and more, more directly. And that's what I was talking about here. And so although we were 86% of our students met or exceeded in 2022, and 87% exceeded in that in 2021, they were, the strengths were in different areas, so we really want to, to address that as well. Okay, can switch to the next slide.
Ellen, I just have a question.
Oh, sure.
Do we have what the percentages look like, like pre-COVID? I guess I'm just curious.
I was about to ask that, like the 2019 numbers, because that's what all the media's been talking about, like 2019 versus now, because 2019 was the last pre-COVID MCAS.
There is, yes, you go back as far as you want, and all you have to do is just click a little arrow that sends you back the year on the, on the department website. I can get, I can send you all that link.
Do you, I mean, do you recall, I mean, has it dropped?
Well, I, I mean, I'm showing you right here, this is, this is our current, the 10th graders, this is their scores, who are the current 11th graders, and this is where they were in 2019, so that's pre-COVID, but they were, you know, they're 7th graders.
On 10th grade, okay.
Yeah. So you can, you can see the growth here, but this is, I thought this was super interesting, we need to think some more about this, because this class, when they took their English as 7th graders, 12% of them had exceeds, and now 13% have exceeds. And you're kind of wondering, is this the same, is this the same students have, they haven't grown as, as much, or our meetings folks haven't grown as much? And yet, the difference here in 2019 was the needs improvement percentage, right? And we have definitely increased where the students from the needs improvement into needs. And so that, that's a really, those students would be performing at a much weaker level, and we'd like to see them in the, in the meets category. Yes, we want to see that number higher as well. But I did think that was interesting, because it, there is, you know, there's dynamics within a, within a grade as well, and you can see sometimes those strengths, you know, moving along with, with the students, but we want to elevate everyone. So when we're looking at their English meeting exceeds, in 7th grade, 74% met and exceeded, and this, in their 10th grade, 86% of them met or exceeded. And for math, 80% exceeded in that, and this, this past year was 91%. So we were happy with that growth there. And the, in math, they went 21% met or exceeded in 7th grade, they were up to 36%. So we can see some growth there for sure. So we were, we were happy with, with those numbers. Of course, numbers can always be better, right? And we're always working and striving for that. But the, I would have, typically, you'd look at 8th and 10th grade, I had to go back to 7th, because these students actually didn't take MCAS in 8th grade. So they didn't have practice in 8th grade either, so I had to go all the way back to 7th grade. So let's see, and I have some, just some notes there, but I think I've run through all that. Any questions on this?
I don't know if you have any more on MCAS, but do the results or have you looked at kind of the scores for, let's say, students from lower income at AMSA, students of color, ESL, and kind of what that growth is looking like? Or are the scores the same or growing?
It's, it is, we haven't, we just actually got these in a couple, a few weeks ago, so we haven't dug in that deeply, but Mike will be working on that with his team, because they're the ones that do this type of data.
And then you typically look at.
But it breaks down, yes. Yeah. And it's typically, our numbers are very, very small, so if you don't have at least 10 students that fall into a certain category, it just shows up as a, as a line, so they don't pull that data out specifically. But we do definitely have data for economically disadvantaged, special education, and our else, English language learners.
I have the 2019.
Yes?
Can I raise my hand?
Oh, please, Mike, by all means.
I have the 2019 numbers, just by going on the website quickly, if you want me to just say it out loud.
Okay, which slide do you want me to compare to?
Well, people are asking about the 2019 10th grade.
Okay, Leanna, can you go back to the original 10th? One more up.
So for, for English, 2019 10th graders, the exceeding and meeting combined was 92%. And for mathematics, it was 96%.
Can you split it into?
Exceeding was 57% for mathematics in 2019, and it was for English, 36%.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's no doubt about it, there's been, there's been an impact, and it's gonna take us years to, to continue to increase it. We have also increased the number of teachers in the math department, so possibly. Yeah, there's always work to do, there's always work to do. All right. Thanks, Mike. It's all there, every number in the, in the world it could possibly want is all there, and it breaks it down, and we use it with the department chairs as well, they've gotten all these numbers, and they break it down by department as well, and, and use it to inform, you know, what they're doing for improvement. Okay. So enrollment and attrition update, and I was thinking about this, Roger, that this used to be a huge topic, and I think there's a time that it was reported, or at least quarterly, if not monthly, and things have really, really stabilized. I thought I'd entertain you a little bit with my grand, my grandkids. That's my oldest son, I was on the phone with just when I came in, and some of my little grand cutie patooties. When, I think when Anders and I started working, I think we inherited like 1,000 kids in the school, and we've been working over the years to bring that to the cap, which is the 966. And it's a gradual thing, right? As the classes graduate, you know, you're constantly balancing, and I have to credit Linda Edwards for watching this so closely and for making sure that we're compliant. When Anders and I first came in 2017, we actually had to kind of go and grovel at the Department of Education because our numbers, our enrollment was so high. So we're, we're proud of those numbers. Next one. This is the, I have six grandkids, two sons, and so that's, it's so cute. I don't know, I just died when I saw her face, sticking her hand in a pumpkin. She looked like she, it's like, ugh! All right, so this is enrollment by grade. This, and the other goal that Linda and I had was to try to level out those grades, right? And 140-ish in that range is what we've been trying to achieve, and it's taken so long, but we finally, we finally have it. And you can see that, you know, in 9th, 10th, and 11th, you'll see on another slide, you know, why those numbers kind of decrease as, as kids sometimes go on to different programs and whatnot, but we try to keep those numbers as stable as we can. All right, next one. All right, this is, this is a little interesting information. This is, this year, our enrollment and the percentage of students that we have from Marlboro, Hudson, Clinton, Maynard, and other. And we still, obviously, we still have 116 students. Way back in the day, this number was bigger than any other number, but that has changed over time as the schools become more and more accepted in the community and more and more popular. And so those are our current numbers, and they shift a little bit each year.
I have a question on the percentages, I guess two questions. One, are there specific percentages these towns should not exceed? And then two, are there percentages by grade of the towns that you're aiming for or things like that?
No, there's nothing by, it's a pure lottery, so you can't say, well, we need this many from a particular town, so not by grade for sure. Marlboro periodically runs into a situation where when they find themselves in the bottom 10% of the state based on their MCAS from two years prior, that the state, it's called the net cap spending rule, and we find out in February before the lottery of whether they're, they're capping how many kids we can take from Marlboro because we have so many, or if their MCAS scores are particularly low that year and they fall below the 10% in the state, they lift that cap and we can take more. And so, and we always take siblings first. So that, that kind of complicates things a little bit, because we usually don't know right till just before the lottery if we're gonna be able to, if we're capped in Marlboro or if we're not capped. When we're told we're capped, we have to skip the Marlboro kids off the lottery list. So that's the only thing really that, that governs that, we're not near cap on the other towns, so we can, you know, we can take out. In the next slide, Leanna actually shows over the years. I think, I thought what was very, very interesting was the Hudson numbers, actually. If you look back to 2019, 20, we had 129 students from Hudson, we're at 196 now. Yeah, I thought that was interesting. I actually just was reached out to, I contacted the Hudson superintendent, and we're gonna get together, I'm sure. This is, this is troubling for him, that, this is three classrooms of, of 5th graders coming here, that are here from Hudson.
Was 2021 of the Marlboro capped year?
It was, because my son went from Hudson, 6th grade, and like all the Hudson kids got in that year.
That's right.
Right, so because, interesting, because Marlboro was capped, so we were only taking, mostly taking siblings and maybe took.
Only, only siblings.
Only siblings.
Yes.
Then a lot of response then opened up to the other four towns, which.
And then it had a trickle down effect.
You'll see all three of them. Hudson went up 50, Clinton went up 15, Maynard went up 14 in that capped year.
But if you look at Clinton and Hudson, though, they're kind of upy downy, upy downy, but they're kind of in the same range where, you know, you had that big hot in, in Hudson. That's a big hot.
How do we get others? Like, how does that?
Well, there, believe it or not, there's are still some siblings, like Roger's kids were others. We have a family in Townsend that has like eight kids, and we still have some of their kids here from way back in the day. But also, you'll see on a different slide, Leanna, let's go, let's go up one more. Oh, it'll be after this one, actually. So this is the attrition number, so this is how, this is a last year, a complete summary of how many students we lost during the year and where they went. So you can see, you know, five from this class went to Aspen, so there's your 8th grade class, and six of them went back to their home district, Kavadi School. You know, sometimes that's for sports, sometimes that's for other reasons. Private schools, we lost four students to private schools, for a total of 29 for all of last year. Yeah, see, yeah. Those who've been around for a while know that's a good number. Leanna, one more slide. This is just the previous one year, and it was 33 the year before that. So once again, we're talking about four students, it just does end up being a lot of work for Linda. So, any questions on the attrition numbers? Okay, next one. All right, so here's your waitlist number, and this, Bella's where it comes in, your question. So if a 6th grader leaves right now, all the siblings have been taken in from 6th grade from the lottery, and we have 135 core towns, but let's say for a minute that this was also zero, but we had a student who left, they moved out of state, let's say. It would, then Linda would offer a spot from the non-core town. So that's how we get it, some students from Shrewsbury and Grafton and Framingham and a few other things like that. One of the things that, if you remember, I mentioned that we had a bumper crop year of applications, it was a huge year for us, super excited about it. We still have 825 students on the waitlist. This last year, at this time, it was 432. So we're, we're thrilled. That position for us, once again, you know, just guarantees stability for the, for the school. You know, obviously, too, you look at this, at this number, and you think, what about those 850, you know, 825 students who would like to be here and can't? And that may be something that you want to think about in the years ahead. Any questions about this?
Who oversees the sibling policy?
It's done by the state. There's an admissions, if you go to the admissions page on the website, you'll see the whole admissions.
We have a quirky, there's a quirky twin policy.
Twins?
I'm curious if it was an AMSA policy or, okay, wow.
That is a state.
It is a quirky policy.
It is a quirky, because what ends up happening is one sit gets in, but the second sibling isn't considered a sibling until the first day of school that the first one shows up. Yes, do you have twins?
No, my son has very good friends that are 6th grade twins, and that happened to them, and it was a challenging summer for the mother while. And it was a challenging summer for the mother, wondering where are my children going to school?
Yeah.
They had their first, one had her first day at Quinn, and then three days later, it was like, oh, you're going to AMSA now. It was, it was just a weird transition.
It is. One of the fun things, actually, when I came to, to AMSA was how many twins and triplets we have in the school. Uh, it kinda makes you take a double take a lot. Um, I think it's kind of a fun aspect, but that is, you're absolutely right. They treat, the state treats each individual child as an individual with a sibling status, but only once they actually show up for school. Yeah, it's kind of, it's rough, I know. We, I know Linda's very careful, and she does track all that so that, um, 'cause we know that's a hardship for the families, for sure. Yeah. Uh, next one? Oh, okay, here we go, building update. Any other questions on any of the other data that's kinda fun and interesting to look at? All right, November is a very important month. This goes back to what Thora was asking and what we're talking about as far as the building and where are we, so many. Um, and, you know, I'm putting this up here because a lot of you are involved in parts of this, and I wanna make sure it gets on your calendars and, and you're aware of it. November fourth, the cost estimates are due at noon, um, from WT Rich. Now, this is when they actually say to us, the project that, that we have been working on, the building and the circulation, they're going to give us the estimate, the number. Um, yeah, Bella's laughing, I know Bella. It's coming next week, so we will, we will probably see that number in general, but that number's gonna go through a lot of different hoops before it, it goes. They go back and they say, well, do you really need this kind of tile? And they, and they start doing the value engineering on it. That is a process that will be done with the architects and with Bob Baldwin and, and the whole, and Nick Poirier will be involved as well. So that, um, that happens up here. This is November fourth. While they're working on that, we're expecting our new appraisal to come in on November seventh. This is, this is do or die. This is probably one of the most important things that can happen at this point. It's something we've been talking and worrying about for a year. Um, the appraisal has, you know, we're just waiting for the report. And one of the reasons that this is so important is that they have got to tell us that, that once we're, the building is built and once the circulation is done, that this property is enough to secure the $24 million loan. And if it does not appraise there, then they could reduce the amount of loan from 24 million to 20 million or whatever it is. That's gonna have a huge impact on us. It could be 200,000, it could be, we don't know. And then this is where some of the strategic, um, thinking comes in. And I have started talking to Bob already about, um, you know, what if the number he is here, what are, what are options? And we will have those options all laid out for you, um, to look at and make decisions about. So we get the appraisal from Thatcher on the seventh of November. He's in contact at Boston Private, which is also Silicon Valley Bank. And then we have a facilities task force meeting on November tenth. And this is the meeting where Bob, um, Nick, myself, Leona, Eric, will, will just look at all the information that we've connected, we've collected, um, make recommendations, maybe have to bounce it back, hopefully not. And then from there, it goes to the facilities, I'm sorry, the finance committee to look at the numbers and the budget and the appraisal on November fifteenth. So we definitely need folks there at that for finance committee. Finance committee will look at it, will rip it apart, will have then, they need to approve it. Once they approve it, then it goes to a special board meeting to all of you on November seventeenth. Okay? At November seventeenth, you will be approving the design. Yes, this is what we like, this is what we're gonna do, and the cost of it. Okay? And it will do presentations for you, uh, for both of those states. But that will be, that will be the vote. And it will be coming as a recommendation from finance, as long as they approve it. Yes?
Given that that's so much happening in such a short period of time, so I ask a question, and I hope you take it the right way. When can the board review things? So that way we come to your meeting on seventeen, prepare, right? Like, one thing I struggle with, maybe it's just me, is sort of taking in so much important information and then generally, you know, wanting to support it. But I feel better if I can put a little time into the reading. So just, just a thought as to, you know, even if it hasn't gone through finance, just to start getting, I feel like it's one of the times where you're gonna get so much information that's important.
Yeah, that's interesting. I, I would also invite anyone who would like to come to finance, to come to finance, right?
Yeah, I just made a thought about that, yeah.
And to come and take a look at it. Um, I will have more information for you.
Something to keep in mind is all, that's all I ask.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Obviously, it's gonna be a very busy month.
After this meeting here, I will talk to, talk to them and ask what we can put forward. Um, certainly after the finance committee meeting, that would give you a couple of days. But anyone who would like to come to finance, please, feel free. This is a big decision, it's important, but the more time that goes by, is it just, it just pushes the whole, the whole project out, which is why we're trying to get it all done for November, yeah. 'Cause we don't have another board meeting until December first. Um, the, the holidays are coming, so we're trying to get it done. But we want you all to feel comfortable and secure in making a vote, right? And if you don't, then we'll put it off, and we'll get more information for you, what you need. We'll try to have all the players here to, that can answer you, the professionals that can answer your questions. Um, you know, Cassania and whoever else we can get that we feel like we need to have here so that you feel good about it. It's not gonna be easy to vote on, um, on this huge, huge amount of money, right? It's huge.
Question, so the board is voting on part of the design, and this could just be me not being around previous years. Um, who separate from the board has been involved in, um, sort of these design decisions already? Like, who are the stakeholders from AMSA or things like that that have been part of it?
Yep. Um, so we, we did way back, a lot of different surveys and, and things like that. Um, I've said, I remember saying just last year, student surveys, sent out a parent survey, the community council was involved. Unfortunately, this is, it's a rectangular building. It's a rectangular building, you know what I mean?
No, I mean, the overall look, it's sort of the样子 of the building and then that kind of thing, um, who's been involved? And like, what, what is this building going to do and hold? And prioritizing those decisions and everything?
Right. So the building is going to have five laboratories in it. Um, there's two new physics labs, two new chemistry labs, one new biology lab. The chemistry lab that's in this building will be a new one, and this chemistry lab here will become a new biology lab.
That looks very helpful. Sorry, if it helps, I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Please.
I know there's been a lot of forums, for lack of a better term, where the, the needs for the building have been discussed.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I know the staff, the staff has been involved too, like putting in their requirements and...
Department chairs.
Department chairs.
The department chairs met with the architects, um, also.
I, I do remember, we did have to vote when we originally thought we were gonna be able to use the top floor of the white building for classroom space. And then we realized it was gonna be more expensive than actually building the, the building. We had to make a choice, you know, do we want to invest first in athletics or first in academics? And that was a whole discussion, it was a public discussion. It was voted by the board, and then we decided to put classroom space first, building the foundations, but then, you know, hopefully in the future, we'll get our gym there. So I don't know if there's more specific examples of, but I do know that, that we have made an effort to make sure everybody's involved and putting in...
Internally, I think you did a really good job involving your science folks. You know, I think, you know, from everything we had heard all along, it was gonna be most impactful after the white building was ruled out, that there be a rearrangement of science. So I think the feedback that I heard certainly was that the science staff was heavily, you know...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Involved is the right word that I'm looking for, but just, you know, you sought out the opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just trying to get...
Yeah, these are all good questions.
Uh, yeah, I think, and Roger, Roger would know this, this best because he's been around forever, but we've been talking about this for years. Years and years, and, um, you wanna jump in, Roger?
We, we've been talking about this project, have come up with various designs in various places for at least ten years.
Seven that have been here, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's been a lot of thought put into this project. You know, the, the clear decision that was made last year, the key decision, what ended up, well, the two big things that happened, we, we decided, we prioritized academics over athletics for the immediate term, and school safety.
Yes.
That was the one key decision. The other key thing that drove that decision was initially, our initial thought was we would remodel the upper floors of the white building and use that for classroom space. But after...
Four and a half million dollars of coding improvements, we claimed.
Uh, it was, it, it was cost prohibitive to, it was cheaper to build a new building than to, than remodel the building.
It happened to us.
We had to massively pivot from our initial plan, which is how we got, which is the quick version of how we got to here.
And from a board perspective, the only conversations that were not public during those whole ten years were ones where we were considering other alternatives. So we looked at other buildings, we looked, we tried to find another home, and we couldn't do those publicly because of negotiations. And we were still in the middle of the lawsuit with our ten, our landlord here, and so that's the only thing that hasn't included the whole community, because we couldn't. But other than that, you know, that's, it's been a long...
And as far as internally, who's involved, it's myself, it's Leona, it's Eric Lane, who's the director of our facilities. And, um, I manage the facilities task force, which includes our owner's project manager, a group called Answer Consulting. It includes the architects, Finkel Alexander, Alexander. It concludes, it includes the, um, the construction company, which is WT Rich, includes a consultant.
Sorry, Eagles.
His stem's sorry, Needles, yeah. It's, it's, um, the facilities task force. And Nick Poirier, who is on the board here, is also a contractor, has, he's a partner in a company. So we've had a lot of advisors, a lot of help. And I'm forgetting that you just, uh, come to us for July first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you wanted to talk to Leona, I'd be happy to kinda run through everything. Can you give you the whole, the whole history? Uh, just tell me how much time you have. Um, so that's, well, yeah.
I love that you're asking questions, because, um, anything that you don't think you're up to date on, you're probably, whoever's watching these meetings afterward, having the same questions.
Or, you know, where there's always new families.
That's right.
It's, it's great to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you're not shy, because this is really good. Because I asked the same questions this time last year.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, you're, you're welcome to ask any, any questions. I love answering questions. Okay. So we had, um, we had our imagined kickoff, and you had heard about that. We showed you some pictures and, and heard about some of the things that we're doing. These pictures were, this was a lovely event. These were actually taken beforehand, before I got too busy chit-chatting with everyone. Um, so you can kinda see the setup of the room here. Um, here's, you know, one of the posters we had up. There's Mirjo, and there's Mike, and Ben. Um, and so that was the room. We gave a presentation from the front. Um, let's see, Raul did a beautiful job, uh, welcoming everyone. Um, I did a presentation, we had, I sent around to you the, um, Kristy Jagalski, the chair of the science department, did a great job with Mike Finkel on the video. It was about ten minutes showing the science labs and the condition of them. Take a look at that, it's, uh, it's pretty impressive. Kristy did a fantastic job. Um, and then we closed it up, Moore closed it up. And so it was a lovely night, there was a lot of excitement in the room. Parents were excited. I know that Bella was there, and Sheila was there, and, and Roger was there too, so. And of course, Raul, 'cause he was speaking. Uh, but it was all fun.
And I do gotta say, if anybody wants to go watch that video, I'm assuming it's on the website, right, the, the video?
The video, Mike, Mr. Finkel? No.
Maybe soon.
We decided not to put it on the website.
Oh, the, the video of, of, that Kristy did, where we decided not to put it on the website.
Okay, but...
But we're gonna show it individually to people, yeah.
Absolutely. So the feeling I got from watching that video, which I told everybody in the, that day, is that it highlights limitations and, but it didn't come across that, hey, you know, we're, we're complaining about our building. What it also highlighted was the passion, that even with these limitations, we make it work. Even that we, you know, everybody's happy with what we have, but just imagine what we could do if we didn't have these limitations. So it was very well put together in that regard. So, you know, I, I think it was a good balance of showing the limitations, but also saying, we're passionate enough that we make it work. Just imagine how much further we could go if we didn't have these limitations. So, you know, I think it was great.
They did a beautiful job. Um, and, uh, as I said, the excitement, it was a wonderful night. I, I left, um, feeling that it was just so worth it. Um, and, you know, we've reached out to families who were there, and, and people are excited, so, so that's, that's wonderful. Um, and this is our new director of development, her name's Marcy. Um, Marcy is what, um, one of our parents, Darren Rose, referred to as a unicorn in our own backyard. She has a very deep, um, resume of successful capital campaigns that they've done. Um, she is still working with, because, uh, she's on the, she's on the, um, well, I guess maybe they just closed out the Concord Free Library, but there was like sixteen million dollars that they raised there. Um, she also worked for five years over at Arlington Catholic High School, doing, um, running their, their program. And then she worked a number of years at, uh, Boston Symphony Orchestra and raised a lot of money with them too. So she has deep experience, was very, very excited to have her. She's accepted the position, and she was at the event the other night. And she's gonna be at our capital campaign Zoom call tomorrow. Um, so we're very excited. We don't necessarily have an office space for Marcy, so she's gonna, uh, she may cozy in with Anders and I for a little while. Uh, but she's very flexible and said, put me wherever you want me anytime, all I need is a laptop. So, um, loved her spirit, uh, excitement, um, in, in her ideas. The other thing that Marcy is working on, this is notes from Bora, was, and Mark Vale as well, the rebirth of the alumni association, which was just terrific. I went to their first meeting, and there was six alumni there. They had another meeting the other night, and I was not up to, um, to attending that. But Mark went, the folks who went first time returned, and they brought some of their friends with them. They had a big group. Um, they have three events that they're planning. And really, Mark and Moore put this together as more or less like an ad hoc, just come together a couple of times and give us some ideas and what would, you know, grab and reach you. And instead, um, they decided they wanna meet monthly. So that's exciting, and then one of the events they're doing is, um, for those of you who know Stasia, um, she's been around for a long time, and she works for us periodically. But she, it's her graduation, a five-year reunion, so they're gonna get to work on a five-year reunion as well. So that's, that's exciting, and Moore asked me to pass that along to you. And, um, and Marcy will be working on that as well. Next one? Oh, little razzle at the time. Okay, so these are just the photos that, these just tickled me so much. These are eighth graders, um, and, and they're looking at bolus. If you look way up in the very top corner, you can see it's like that little slimy snally thing up there. And, and she has drawn the picture, and she's taking notes here. And they've all got their little magnifying glass, look at, they're adorable. They all have their magnifying glass, um, and they're, they're looking and they're drawing what they're, what they're seeing and taking notes. And I just, I love this, look at them looking.
Like, is my son giving like a death stare?
Which, which, is this one?
He's like, I don't want my picture.
Actually, um, if you're a little close, there's a little smiley smirky on his face. Yeah.
Oh, well.
Yeah, to me, there's, look at these little, these nature journals and things they do. There's nothing, um, better than to have pictures captured of how intently our kids are working. It's, um, it's just really a beautiful thing to see and experience, so, um, so fun, eighth graders. Um, next one? Love, love this, this is Lisa Tebow, and one of our, our new teachers, um, Ms. Tears, and they made cells out of shinkings, right? So cute. But what I love about this is you got this, this guy up here, and he's, he's researching. He's got his laptop, and he's looking at a cell there. He's looked it up in all the different pots, and they're all labeled. And then he's drawing it, so we've got, we're researching, we're looking, we're reading. Now we've got our hands involved, we're drawing, we're coloring them, once again, all the different parts, reinforcing, reinforcing, reinforcing. And then Lisa put them, held the oven. She put a hole in them so they could use it as keychains and things. But if you, if you look at the detail of some of these, um, it's just absolutely amazing what our kids, and I, I looked at it probably for way too long 'cause I wanted to see each one of them. Um, but our kids are absolutely incredible. So I, I just wanted to share that too. Leona? Okay, upcoming events. We have the holiday staff party, you're all invited, December thirteenth. Um, I think it's, we're not sure where it is gonna be yet, because... December 13th. I think it's, we're not sure where it is going to be yet because everything is so expensive. You can't, you can't do it. So we're, we're looking for options. If you know any folks that have friends that have facilities that can hold 100 people, let us know. Lynn McCluskey's working on this and she has a number of options. And the cost is just, is just through the roof this year.
All right. In here.
That would be so sad. I would feel like the staff would feel like it was just another PD. You know, that would be no fun. So we'll, we'll figure it out. But, but boy, it's, it's like more than double the cost. It's just crazy. Just to remind you for your friends and relatives and whatnot, that they are accepting lottery applications from November 18th till February 3rd. That date has shifted at the request of D. So that's that. Arts Night, love to have you come up for Arts Night. Remembering that Arts and Science Night are combined in May. This is just the Arts Night. And that's Tuesday, January 24th. And then we have a strategic board meeting right on Saturday, January 28th. And Raul and his committee will be working on that. So I think that's it. One more. And any questions on anything? Stop talking now.
Fantastic update. That's so great.
Oh, thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for being here. I should have said that in a bit.
All right, I'm fine. That included the capital campaign update.
That, it's perfect. We are, we just have 10 minutes for Q and A.
Excellent.
I'm quite impressed.
Any other questions for Ms. Lindsay? Thank you again for sharing. And again, that, that event last, last week, last week was definitely great. It's, I think we're making history. AMSA is doing something that we've never done before. We are thinking about the future and building, you know, capital really means future. It's the, the future of AMSA. So that's really exciting. Thank you very much. And Laura's not here. I hope she can listen to us. But that also includes, your update included the capital campaign update. All right? Anything else? All right. Then we'll move to parent rep report, Laura.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think that is amazing. You hired Marcy because it's a top hiring market. So, and she seems fantastic. I was like, oh, wow, that was fast from when we approved the position. So that is really fantastic.
I think it was a great decision. I've put ourselves in the back. I think it was a great decision.
I know on many parent updates, I have heard some just positive chatter and feedback. And it's funny, it happened to come up on the screen after, that there is excitement about these field trips happening again. Because I think especially, you know, I can speak largely for the middle school. It's been a long time. And so families are very appreciative to see these coming back. The kids feel like they haven't had them in a long time. So, yeah, just really, just another sign of going back to normal. I do hope more parents find a medium to reach out directly because I, I hear, I hear complaints, I hear gossip, I hear rumors, you know, through various mediums. And I don't know if they're getting reported. And so the only one thing I thought I'd bring up to find out if it is getting brought up to someone is various complaints about bus issues and things like that. And are parents bringing those to people's attention? Or are they just complaining amongst themselves?
No, it's, it's probably a little of everything. And, and so the buses aren't ours and we don't have control of them unfortunately. So for, for example, today, I, I was on bus duty. I was Lynn McCluskey, definitely above my pay grade. But I was out there walking, talking and, and it was fun. But one of the buses was 20 minutes late. And we do get notification. They do let the students know. But that's not reliable for parents when you're expecting your child to be home. So Lynn McCluskey is our operations manager. Folks, she communicates and gets a lot of mass information out. But she, she works directly with the bus company. They obviously have the same kind of staffing problems that everyone is having, right? So she, she really does an outstanding job. It's very, very difficult. It's always been difficult, but now it's, it's worse than, than ever. I would say that the busing, although frustrating, is better than the bus. Last year was a nightmare. It was an absolute nightmare, the Marlboro buses. But they should always reach out to Lynn. And even in the moment where my, my child didn't come home or whatever, reach out to us in the moment. She can always call the bus company and find out like if a bus is late or where they are.
Okay. Who's the bus contractor?
It's North Threading.
North Threading is the name, is the bus company?
Yeah. With the contract of the bus, we, we back up Marlboro District.
Oh, okay.
So it all funnels through?
So it's North Threading Transportation and it's through the Marlboro District. Do you have any control over that or no?
So Lynn McCluskey meets with them every single week. She meets with the bus company, the, the district people at Marlboro, Marlboro Public Schools.
District.
Um, there's a whole group of them that meet just to work all of these issues out on a weekly basis.
It didn't, as I said, didn't used to be quite that bad. But they, it's interesting, I, because I went to one of these meetings myself last spring. The bus drivers get to pick their routes. And actually, AMSA is, is in pretty good shape because our kids have so well behaved that they often get picked up first. But as soon as you have someone who, is not safe for, then the COVID, COVID comes in and they're off for five days. Now it backs up and then they will run their routes first and then come.
As in the Marlboro public routes?
Yes. Yeah. It's a, it is a very collaborative relationship. Lynn works really well with them. They have been, I think they are doing as, as well as they can.
And does she ever get, like I'm thinking in the mornings, does she get advance notice if that is happening? Where there could be like some kind of notification that goes out to parents, like, expect this. But she really doesn't even get the notice?
Not, not all the time, every day on all.
Do you know if she, my kids don't take the bus too, so I don't have, do you know if she puts, if she gets the advance notice, does she put that?
She does put it out there.
Yes. How does she do that?
She has all the bus routes with all the family contact information? Yeah. So she can say, oh, bus C3 and get a
So she'll leave a heads up?
In the L.
I think we, I think I've got a text.
Oh, okay. Great. That's true.
Yeah. I mean, good as a
So she knows and sometimes she doesn't always know. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's, we have decent communication.
Yeah. So it sounds like a lot of extra data.
Unfortunately. Yeah. And they actually, the state itself has reduced the amount of training that you need to drive a bus, good or bad, to get more capable
So is the MBTA, in case anyone
Not to get off target, but just so you have kind of an idea. They used to have to know how to fix a bus. So they've removed those requirements because they feel that, you know, we don't have to worry about fixing buses. So some of that helped.
Yeah?
Oh.
Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Glad to hear positive feedback. So we, sometimes we forget. Parents speak up when they have something to, to share, some texts about positive. Glad to hear the positive. Back to the report.
This is for him. Okay. So the general feeling in faculty is still one of positivity. This year's going very well. The first quarter is pulling to a close. That'll be ending at the second, beginning at the second. So there's always the, the busyness that comes with that. But everyone I've spoken to has agreed that this quarter has gone very smoothly and is, we're in a much better position kind of across the board than we were this point last year. With that being said, there were just a couple of things that teachers reached out to me to bring. One being, a teacher just wanted to make sure it was brought to attention of, there've been a lot of interruptions to the school day across last quarter and now spread across six grades. But things like medical screenings, PSATs, different field trips and things like that. And this teacher was a little concerned that it's been disruptive to teachers that teach cross-grade classes, having this set of students out and that set of students out. So that was just something that teacher wanted brought up. The other one does come with a small note that professional development is something that if you ask 100 teachers their opinions on, you will get 157 different answers. Except when you ask teachers directly what they would like from professional development, in which case you'll get 157 crickets. There was a PD that was given this last week by Challenge Success that I partnered with. And overall, the general feeling towards Challenge Success is it's a very useful partnership, a lot of great stuff getting done there. This PD did not feel like a useful use of teachers' time. Teachers felt that it was not presenting actionable things to work on. It was on, it was on engagement. And it, it went on for a while, but didn't have anything that teachers felt they walked away with, we could work on this or we could do that. And they just wanted it brought that they would appreciate a review on how that resource of the time was being spent. Because this one did not feel like it was a useful use of teachers' time. But beyond those two things, it's been a very positive first quarter.
The, the practical side of it is coming in the November, June, November 17th. We also did a survey at the end. Challenge Success themselves did a survey at the end that the teachers all participated in. And they will be processing that. This was just yesterday, right?
Yeah. Yeah. It wasn't just yesterday. This week is held.
Yeah. We really like Challenge Success. And you don't always know how things are going to land. It was on classroom engagement. The other thing that's really difficult about professional development is Zach is absolutely right, is that you've got teachers who've been teaching for 30 years and you have teachers who are just walking out of a training program, right? And so you're trying to find, and it's not, it's never going to, to be the right thing for everybody. But you hope that maybe some of the new folks got to listen to some of our more experienced teachers about engagement and they did a little group work and stuff like that. But anyway, we will definitely take whatever feedback that we've gotten on that.
Just out of curiosity, is there, to your point about so many different opinions, and one of the things that I do remember talking about is that the PD budget doesn't get fully used every year. What, is there a formal, I'm sure there's a lot of conversations and input and whatnot, but what's a formal way that teachers get involved in actually shaping that PDs through the chairs?
Do you want to say that?
Yeah. I mean, there's different avenues, right? There's personal PD that they can use that, that budget for. They also have PD within their departments that's specific to that. This is kind of the, the, yeah, the everyone. And Anders works with this with Mike and the Challenge Success team, this whole team of, of teachers that are involved in that. And we'll be doing a survey with the Challenge. So Challenge Success is a national organization. And we've done some great work. If this one fell flat, you know, obviously we don't like to hear that. But I'll be interested in fall flat for everybody, but, but for the more experienced teachers that don't like, been here, done this. I know that Anders, at the end, he said, I'm, I am worried. When he came back to the office, he said that folks are going to feel like they didn't have anything actionable. So he did announce at the time that that would be coming part two down November 17th. This was kind of, it was like a two-part thing. But, you know, we, we want people to feel like it's a good use of their time. So we'll take a look at that.
And I will also add, Mike is fantastic about asking for teacher feedback on what PDs we want to see in half days or teacher workshops or stuff like that. Like, there are a lot of avenues where we can give ideas on what PDs should look like.
And teach them yourselves.
Yes.
Because teachers teach, well, doing that in January, they're going to be putting workshops together, actually, once again, around engagement.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I hate chatting in from the crowd. A huge crowd over here. November 3rd, the students are participating. The students in grades nine through 12 are taking Challenge Success surveys. So the preliminary data should be available, from what I understand, for the November 17th, follow up with our staff. And I do believe that once we have relevant, up-to-date student data on their feelings around the school, their social, emotional wellbeing, as well as their academic experience, I think that will certainly speak volumes to our staff and make it feel much more meaningful. I thought yesterday was kind of like a, like a prep, like preparation for the data that's to come. Because I think we're going to have a story told on November 17th, at least the preliminary information from our students, directly from our student body. And that will, I hope, make people feel like it's more worthwhile.
Question in return. Putting on like my middle school parent hat. How come the middle schoolers don't take the survey?
Yeah. So that's, I don't, I'm not directly involved in the Challenge Success group. I don't know, Zach, are you in Challenge Success or not?
I'm not.
They, they find it difficult, from what I understand, you could email probably Anders Lewis or Kate Driver specifically about this question. But from what I understand, they, they find it difficult to, to split, to have, you know, middle school and high schools on the same, like to work simultaneously with two different schools, if you will. So they focus on, on the high school experience. But I do believe that the lower school teachers, I think that the, the data that will come in certainly still applies to, I mean, the fact that we have students here on campus in sixth or eighth grade. I do think that what we will have, it's, it applies to the middle school. I truly believe that. It's just the way Challenge Success has said that they operate.
Are they mostly high school, Mike?
Challenge Success?
Yeah.
I believe that they only work with high school or with middle school. They don't split. Again, I would talk Kate Driver and
Kate, yeah, Kate's your expert.
Provide more information.
She's the director of
I asked her the same question not too long ago when we first started working with them.
Great organization. They work with schools all over the, all over the country that are like ours, right? You know, high academics and the pressure that that puts on students and how to try to help them to optimize their, their academic experience, but also to balance their lives a little bit.
Yeah. So, sorry.
Yeah. So it's, it's a very reputable group. And I think that they've done a lot of work to kind of help us to get some common language around, you know, SEL and the, the social, emotional part of the classroom.
One, one thing I was going to add is that we are still going to, and Zach, I think, learned this recently, we are going to task our class advisors for grades six, seven, and eight and their teams on developing specific surveys for the sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade level. And I believe that we can pretty much mirror several of the questions that will be on the Challenge Success survey anyway, and gather information there. So we still are going to survey our middle school students, engage their academic experience, their, you know, their overall wellness and the way they feel here. It's just going to come at a different, different avenue.
As long as it gets done, that's fantastic. Yeah.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we have that, we have that on, in the works for later on in the year.
I mean, what, they talked about national, obviously, they've done a lot of national work too. But that students are less engaged since, since the pandemic. And so, you know, we want to re-energize everyone around, around engagement. And let's, you know, look at some new ways to engage students. And so that was, that, that's kind of the theme of the year around professional development. One of the, we did do this survey with our students back in 2019. So, you know, too much has happened since then. So we want to see where everyone is now. But I was actually surprised. They break, they broke down learning around, you know, are we highly engaged or are we just kind of do in school? And back in 2019, it was what, 51% that, do you remember the number?
It was 58% of our students.
Eight percent, college students? So they just do in school. But we don't want them just do in school. We want them highly engaged and finding joy in the knowledge of school.
Girls are teenagers.
Yeah. Except that there isn't, you know, 42% that are, that are saying, yeah, like, I, I either, you know. So we want to try to get more on that bandwagon. So that's engagement.
Thank you for the questions, Laura. Anything else, Zach?
Nope, that's all for me.
Excellent. Any other items want to bring back up from all the reports? Zach, Laura's or Ellen's? Good. Then we move on to chair business. They're all related to our next step or next executive director. First, I'll give you a quick update on, if you remember last board meeting, we talked about the structure that we want to create for Ellen's new role. So just to recap a little bit of that, Ellen has agreed, wants to, even though she's moved into retirement, she wants to move into a new role within the school to keep engaging to make sure she sees through all this, you know, the effort that we're putting with the capital campaign and then building and whatnot. And one of the questions was, how does that get structured? And so we've been working on that since then. The update on that is that we, we landed, speaking with some experts and some discussion internally, we agreed that it makes sense for creating that role. If you remember, we used to If you remember, we used to have a role that reported to the board besides the executive director. Right now, the only person that the board can hire is the executive director, according to the bylaws. We are actually thinking that we should go back to having a second role, which, you know, the working title is executive capital development, to focus on capital development, which includes the building and, you know, any capital expense or any capital project that we have. But it's also focused on that development piece. So we've been working around with org structures, who would report to whom, how would that work? But we landed on the idea that this new role should be reporting to the board. So we'll have the executive director and the executive capital director reporting both to the board. Which, if you remember, a couple of years ago, is something that we used to have with different names, two different roles reported to the board in the bylaws. Which means that in order for that to be enacted, we have to change the bylaws. So we did not have governance meeting this month to bring that up. Plus, by the time we brought it up, it's actually too late based on open meeting law. But, so we're going to discuss this in the next governance committee meeting. We have, though, I should say Sarah has reached out to these to let them know what we're planning. They have a ready responding saying, based on what you explained and our understanding of this is going to work, we're in support of this. And they can actually approve this because for a bylaw change, we need to submit those to these and they need to approve them before we can actually vote for that change of the board. So they said, we can approve this and we can actually do it outside the cycle because normally we'd have to wait until January.
June 1st, actually. Yeah, January and June.
Exactly, between January and June. So we have to wait, give them to them in January and then wait for them to respond by June. They said, we can do that off-cycle, we can do that, you know, as soon as, you know, we receive the proposal from AMSA. So the plan is that we'll discuss it in the next governance committee meeting, which is coming up. And then we'll bring, between then and the board meeting, we will get the approval from these. And then with that approval, we'll bring that draft bylaw change to the full board for approval. And then that role will be created. And, you know, we can start conversations with Ellen about making sure that's. I think it's important for multiple reasons. Number one, for everybody to know and feel comfortable that Ellen is going to be around in some capacity for a certain amount of time. That's good for everybody to know and some formality to that. It will also help with the search because the new executive director, the candidates that are going to be coming in, the more they know and they can predict how this is all going to work, the better it is, the more attractive we look as a school. Because nobody wants to come in and say, so, you know, is she leaving or not? So clarity is important. And so we're doing this in sake of transparency, which is what we've done with all the search process. So that's the update. Wait for a vote for the next board meeting and those in governance, we're going to talk about it and get into specifics with job description, with the bylaws change and all that in the next governance committee. So that's the update. Turn it over to Dawn to talk about the search.
Sure. And just following up on Raoul's excellent summary, I just wanted to thank Sarah for helping us unravel all of the, what I would call governmental rent tape to change her own bylaws. So Sarah, you always do such a great job taking care of us, our meetings, our problems in between meetings. And your historical knowledge is top-notch for AMSA, so thank you as always.
Make sure that's reflected in the minutes, don't you?
Yeah, make it prettier than I said it, but you know. So the executive director's search has been busy in October. A big amount of outreach has been done. So I took some notes just to sort of relay to the board and to anyone watching the meeting, kind of recap our October activities. October 5, our consultant, John Tarvin, spent a day at AMSA. And a big thank you to Anders for helping arrange that. They set up small meetings with parents, faculty, other staff, students. And John just spent the day here really getting a good feel for AMSA. You know, I think we've said in the other meetings, he's already familiar with us. But it's always good to refamiliarize yourself. It's always a different school every year. So John reported, and we'll hear more about how the day went. But his overall, top-level view is it was such a successful day. He felt he really connected and got some really great feedback from folks. You know, he's really trying to understand different stakeholders and what they would love to see in another ED. So nothing about the current ED, but just sort of, hey, we're, you know, going to be looking for a new person. You know, I think especially it's great to reach out to the staff. Anytime there's changeover in a school, I've seen this in other districts, it can be really nerve-wracking. So I was really glad that John spent the day. I was glad it went well. And I actually had feedback from folks inside the building saying, hey, this consultant really seems great. So I didn't expect that, but that was really great to hear. So just, it sounded like it was a really positive day. And again, big thanks to Anders, he's been amazing through all of this, helping set everything up from the AMSA side. So that was October 5. October, middle of October, everyone here should have had the opportunity to reach, for John Tarvin to reach out, Board of Trustees, to have small group meetings in line with open meeting law, to give your own feedback on what you think is important in our next executive director cycle. People were able to take advantage of speaking with John. We also had spoke to John, just in general, to reiterate, the Board of Trustees has been, I think, very adamant from the beginning that we have a very inclusive and transparent process. So in addition to sort of those initial outreaches, we also wanted to say, you know, we'd like to have the staff have another opportunity, if they couldn't have met with you on this small group meeting day, and as well as a parent-family opportunity to chime in. So we really do want to hear from everyone. And I think John was very responsive. He conducted a staff-only Zoom. And we, I think Anders, I saw all the messaging, everyone had plenty of notice to be able to participate. It was just the staff and John who were interested to be there. So there was no question of, you know, oh, and there's a trustee tuning in or, you know, a member of mine, you know, my boss. You don't want to give your feedback in front of your boss. So I really appreciated John doing that and honoring what we had asked of him. And then we also put together, hopefully everyone saw it, a parent-family survey. Again, same theme, what would you like to see in executive director? What sort of issues would you like that person to tackle? What sort of things do you think are important qualities? So that went out and that survey ended this past Sunday. We've got a decent response for surveys. I haven't seen the data yet, but we'll get more information. Really, it's all going through John, which is great to have sort of that outside presence, keeping the process just on track. And it's got, you know, I think our process has a lot of integrity. We meet again on Halloween. And I think that, looking forward into November, depending on, you know, what John got for information and how, you know, how good he feels about all the messaging he received, we hope to post the job opening in November. Anyone who happens to follow superintendent searches, I do because I'm a nerd, you're starting to see those creep up on the mass superintendent website. So same for us with an executive director. So I feel like our timing is so great. I think our participation's been really great. John has been terrific. So just from my standpoint, and Samini and Raoul are also on committee, I think it's going fine. Very happy.
Thank you, Dawn.
Sure. Any questions, please?
But I can, it's not so much of a question, if I can just say from a staff perspective, the openness of meeting with John and the additional Zoom and everything has built a lot of goodwill amongst the staff in, you know, a very anxious time, given the school's history. It has, you know, there's still anxiety, but it has done a lot to alleviate some people's fears, I know.
That's good. Yeah, and I hope everyone can tell how genuine we are because I've heard a lot about the dark days. But I never get the sense that we will return to those days when I look around this room and when I see our leadership in the buildings and all of our staff. So I know we can't predict the future, but I feel like we've learned a lot from our history. And good days ahead, we'll continue to have good days ahead. So thank you, Zach, that's all.
Excellent. All right. I think this is one of the most important things this board will be doing this year. If not the most important thing. So thank you, thank you for all the support.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just in terms of really looking more long-term into the early part of next year, I guess our portion just gives some thought into what the final interviews would be looking like. And I don't mean to open that right now, but just, you know, the role of the subcommittee is to whittle it down to two or three top candidates. And then we would have, you know, interviews in a setting similar to this. So just something to think about, how you, you know, just start to get your head around it.
Right. And I know we've said this before, but maybe to expand on that, on the subcommittee, which includes people from outside the board, the job of the subcommittee is not to choose the executive director, it's to do the homework to get to the point where we have a small number of candidates, two or three, that then the board talks to and makes a decision. So the decision is the Board of Trustees' decision. So that, think about that. Everybody has a role in the board for making that decision, not just search committee. Excellent. So I guess we don't have more, but I guess your capital campaign update services, the development committee report, then we can move on to education.
So the education committee has met twice so far this school year. We've got a couple of students who are participating in the committee now, getting their feedback. And we're continuing to look at the, how to measure success, how, what things to look at. We're just beginning to feel that, trying to understand what to look at or what not to look at. And I think there was attachment, I think with the previous meeting minutes from education was attached to this reading too. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Nice and short. Which is not going to be shorter than the governance one. I see that Sheila stepped back, but governance did not meet in October. So there's not an update there, but I can mention, we'll at the very least talk about the bylaw change in the next meeting and we'll bring a vote up for the November, I guess, December board meeting. Finest?
Yeah, finance will be refined. Our major focus of the October finance meeting was the audit, we've seen that already. We are planning to have the special finance committee meeting to discuss the building coming forward. And we'll also have our standard monthly finance committee meeting before the December board meeting. Any questions? I'm seeing I'd like to catch up, if you have great finance questions, I'd like to bring back to finance.
Excellent. Any questions about any of the committees or anything else anybody wants to bring up? Yes, we start winding down.
I had one thing, and I think we've talked about it before. Ellen, you said in the past, pre-COVID, board members would spend not necessarily the whole day at AMSA. But I would love to get that started again. I definitely would love to pop in for an hour or two or a class.
Trustee Day.
Yeah, so I don't know what that, you know, I don't know if that's annually at a certain time, but I would love to just get my, you know, this is the first time I've been in this building. So just something to think about.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That was the thing, Liz, remember Liz, you still?
Yeah, so it was a little more background, if you'd like. So trustee day was normally scheduled in the springtime where the trustees were invited and were invited to come in to experience a half-day or day of AMSA classes. And teachers would volunteer to have additional guests in the classroom. And we would basically give them a schedule and say, you know, be a student for a day.
Yes, pick and choose where you wanted to go. Could you do that at the college? I would love that. Lord of trustees, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we'd love to, we'd love to visit.
Thank you for bringing that up because sometimes I find myself, when I, you know, we should all be ambassadors in AMSA. And the more specific we are when we're bragging about AMSA, the better. And I can't say anymore that I'm not a parent of AMSA, but not, even though I have direct experience. When I joined the board, I didn't have a student at AMSA. And the only thing I knew about the school was the board meetings. And, you know, as much fun as we have here, that's not necessarily what people want to hear about, how the board meeting went. So coming to the school and that trustee day was one of the highlights. And I would always say, you know what? I saw Mr. Azaretto use the boards to have students fill out the answer instead of raising their hand. And that allowed, you know, he learned that because collaboration with somebody in the UK. And there's that whole story behind that one moment that I had, that when I tell people that this happened at AMSA, they're like, wow, this is such a great school. And this was one little day, one little thing. So I think it makes a big difference. So I definitely, I mean, we should do it again.
It's super fun. And one of the things that's been really nice this year is, oh, I love bringing people on tours around the school. But we've had, I've had, like, Marcy, she came and we did a tour. The second day of school, I had a potential donor that I gave a tour. I can open up any classroom door in this school. And even on the second day of school, and those kids are learning, they engage. The teachers are doing exactly what they need to be doing. The halls are orderly and peaceful. And it's an amazing thing to be able to walk around, bring anyone off the street in here and be so proud of our teachers and of our students. Maybe not facility, but that's the point. That's the point.
But we make it work.
We make it work. We make it work.
You know, there's school systems that have spent so much money on fancy buildings.
Yep.
And that's what they've done. I'll just leave it there.
Yep, absolutely.
You know it's not.
For me, like, once, because my son started during COVID, once I saw the facilities, it made me realize even more how wonderful the teachers community were. In the sense of like, oh, there really isn't anything to brag about. And I'm just being honest with you.
Yeah, they're not teaching here for this.
Well, compared to, you know, it had to be of a newer middle school. So facility-wise, it's a big difference. But it makes you realize, like, it, you know, it's important, but it's not as important as what the people within that building are doing. And yeah, it's definitely, they're doing something special, so.
Let's do it.
It's a good, bad observation.
Trustees' Day, 2020, let's do it.
Awesome, we're on it.
So do you want, how do we want to coordinate this? Is that something? You, Mike and I work on the education committee.
Oh, Mike, you want to do that? I'm here for your time.
Usually in April, right?
Yeah, typically been, typically been late, later in the school year.
Yeah. Like I said, you can come any day.
Well, it's like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Sarah really organized all of that, but we can, we'll talk.
I don't think so, we'll figure it out right now.
I just offered, I said I would help.
Yeah, we know.
All right, meeting wrap-up. So first a reminder and then a question without reminder. So as you saw from Ellen's report, we do need to get together November 17. First, if you want to consider coming to the finance committee and get some of the background and then see if facilities, that's what's asked after. But then the 17th is a full more meeting that's already scheduled because we're going to make a very important decision that they question. Do we want to do it as a remote meeting or do we want to meet in person?
I'm going to vote remote because I like to look at, I have three monitors.
Look at stuff in front of you.
And I like to look at everything while we're talking. For me, it's more efficient.
I'm going to selfishly vote remote because I have an event at work. So if I could just hop on my computer in my office at 6, that would be easiest.
Yeah, that's not really fine. I think remote for this meeting sounds more secure.
Yes, and the reason, you know, we were trying to push towards being in person for this meeting, for example, because we feel the discussion and, you know, the camaraderie of the full board meeting makes more sense. For something that's focused and data-driven and whatnot, it makes sense. So we'll do that on remote. How about the next board meeting, which is December 1? And I don't remember, that's a regular, is that Thursday? Is that?
Yeah.
I mean, I thought today's meeting was great. And so maybe we, I mean, maybe we do in person. I mean, maybe it just depends on the need of that board meeting. But this was really great discussion.
Yeah, I personally just felt more comfortable sort of asking questions than kind of visiting without knowing a lot of you, yeah.
You just made it worth it.
Yeah, I think it's just so hard to replicate the level of engagement when you're just doing Zoom all the time. So nothing about the members or anyone personally, I think it's just difficult, you know? And I always felt like I was cutting someone off because you know how to talk, so.
Okay. So remote for the 17th, in person for the December 1?
And what you might want to think about is like the January and February chances of weather and snow. Or you have it in person, but have a backup for remote just for the weather. It's dark and cold.
Yeah, yeah. We can put that off. No, that's good, then keep that.
Yeah, I can see that.
Every other month.
Yeah, like every other, like the January meeting, we just do the weather and everything. Early January meeting will be remote, well, obviously.
And then we meet in person for the summer.
In person and sort of take it there.
Okay.
So how are you leaving it?
Sorry, Sarah.
So November 17, remote, December 1, in person. And then we'll take it from there.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Awesome. I did want to, you know, talking about meeting effectiveness. The, I added this question to, I think I mentioned this before, but I'll run the risk of repeating myself. With board on track, as you know, there's a system we use to, you know, capture the minutes for attendance and all that good stuff. It's a great system to keep us in, you know, within our governance requirements. So it's definitely worth it. One thing I learned very recently- One thing I learned very recently is that it's not just a system, it's not just the website. We actually have a lot of services that go along with that. I pointed out some resources that we have, I forget what we're talking about, but they do have resources like a library of documents and things we can refer to. They also have a consultant that every once in a while checks in and says, hey, how are you guys doing and whatnot? So that, that is something that, you know, it's out there for us to take advantage of. So if ever we have a question, it's like, should, how should we be doing this or is there something that we can ask an expert on? That's a resource that we have. One of the reasons I bring it up is that we also have the ability to capture our goals, the board goals and our minutes and everything from the committees in Board on Track. So for example, Roger, you shared the, the Ed Committee minutes as an attachment to this board meeting, but should we agree on how we're doing that? Like, are we doing this in, in the full board meeting or should we put the minutes in the, the committee portion? I forget what it's called, but you know, within the committee meeting, that committee meeting has its own minutes as opposed to the full board minutes. And then we submit the consent report that we talked about in the past that has a different format and it's not a full minutes thing, it's more of a report out of the consent thing. So question out there, is anybody being used in Board on Track or, you know, for those committees out there, does that make sense?
I just start, I just used it for the first time. I, I did the minutes for the Finance Committee through Don's tutelage and I did it through the Board on Track and it was great. It was very easy and it's, it makes it easy to just send out, heavily, yeah, review it and it's good to go. So I mean, I would, if, if that's there, it seems like that would be, that would be great if everyone could use that.
Sarah?
I just wanted to add that one of the things that I really wasn't aware of, I did use one of the consultants at Board on Track and they, they get back to you very quickly, is that we are using, every committee has, they put in their minutes. And what happens is that you share your draft minutes and then when they're approved at the next meeting, I, I think what we should be doing is, once they're approved, then we share it with the whole board. You don't have to read them, but they're available to you at the time. So I think that's one thing we've never done and so that every board member should have access to looking at everybody's minutes once they're approved. You know, I think that's important after they're approved. But the whole idea of this consent agenda and doing the minutes is that it's just supposed to be a, a brief, like, this is what we talked about quickly, this is a recommendation if there is any, and that's it. That's the consent agenda and having the minutes available. So that would be something that I, I will remind people to do once they're approved and I will do the same thing.
I would agree.
And getting the minutes in Board on Track, I mean, that's, that's the place where it gets held, so when the Department of Education asks for them, Sarah can just go in there and just send them all off because one of me goes with charter renewals and things, they want to see all that. So it's.
But we did get pulled out of that, which I mean, we addressed, but it wasn't, we had to fight.
Thanks.
It seems like the best practice that we should go for.
Yeah, I think the one place we've had a challenge is in, I mean, we're still working on is what to put in the consent agenda, which is sort of the inform to the board to say, the Education Committee met and we did this. I didn't.
There's a template.
Yeah, we created a template in governance. Yeah, maybe we can review it in the next board meeting.
At least, at least you could send it out and maybe review, review it in the next board meeting.
Yeah, can we have that as an action item for next board meeting to review and I volunteer Sheila, because she's not here. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be have to go. We discuss it in governance, we put it together in governance and share with everybody, but yeah, we can review that. And the next step too, especially thinking about when we go to a corporate, the strategic planning meeting, would be the goals. We talked about it all the time, like, okay, each committee will have different goals, put them in Board on Track and I think we need to hold ourselves accountable to actually put them in Board on Track and that way we can track them to the same place. So taking advantage of the tool we have, I guess is the theme, my comment. All right? Anything else about the meeting itself?
Well, really the meeting, would it be possible for governance to do an open meeting law training?
I would say, yeah, it's.
Is this the year?
We, we actually were talking about that, it got kind of lost, but open meeting, the question was, there is a great webinar available, do we want the board to use that or do we want someone, Sheila to give a training? That, that was the question, I don't think we ever answered it.
Right.
If you're taking a poll, I would love you to just send a webinar rather than us get together and watch that. That seems awful.
Is that the webinar, like we had, I just, I feel like it did something upon joining the board.
That would be the open meeting law training.
Yeah, okay.
You might like some ethics stuff too.
Yeah, there's an ethics stuff, but I think if the, if we can send a resource out, but I think just a 10 minute, have, have governance chair, I'd be glad to do it if it's too much for Sheila. Just as a board discussion, discuss open meeting law, it's, I think it's much more vibrant as the discussion than a watching a webinar. I don't, firstly, I hope you learn a whole lot, per watching a webinar.
Maybe we can put us homework, watch a webinar and then come.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the homework is to watch a webinar.
Now, we, we used to have a specific meeting in the year when we did that.
Typically, we would target September, October, so it would be at the beginning of the year, get everybody up to speed.
So maybe it should be the December, December board meeting?
I mean, I think what would really be interesting too is where their changes from one year to the next, right? At some point you've seen, you know, I don't know if you've been around and who's done what, but you've done a bunch of these, right? So I'm just trying to think of how to best use our time. So something short, sweet, hear the changes.
Focus on what typically like open meeting law in regards to remote meeting, that's our, that's all this stuff.
Right.
When, when we will currently break out of the requirement to, probably, it's currently April, isn't it?
Yeah, March 3rd, 1st, yeah, let's see what they do.
Yeah, focus on, focus on the recent, recent changes to open meeting law.
And maybe we'll bring it up to governance and Sheila needs help and I heard Roger volunteered.
Volunteering.
All right. As long as we keep it exciting, man.
A little bit excited.
Well, what if we put real like examples, I mean, I can, like, I know I'm not good, I've been pretty bad, especially when I send emails out, so like maybe if you have some examples.
There's always the learning curve.
And I can give you an example that, one thing that is new for me as a chair is that people reach out to me as a chair and sometimes I need to start counting because open meeting law also limits daisy chains. So if I talk to Bella, that's one-on-one, that's not a forum. But then I go and talk to more about the same topic, that's two people, even though we were not together by three kind of people. So we were not together at the same time, but if daisy chain, I need to stop before I reach more. I can't talk to more than, I can talk to four or more, even if it's one-on-one. And I know maybe most of us don't get into that situation, but as the chair, if everybody reaches out to me, it becomes pretty quickly, very easy to break that rule. So that's one of the rules that it's easy to remind ourselves, daisy chain matters. So yeah.
I would just say, who's in the room? Who am I in the room with? Because if, there's been times where there's been several of us in the office and so, yeah, it's like, okay, who am I in the room with? One, two, okay, all right, okay. So just numbers, just.
Right. You can't forward an email, for example, which is, I'm, I'm notorious for doing things like that, so, because that's the daisy chain.
And you can send an email out to inform to everybody and they usually sign those emails saying, don't reply, don't, we know this question. This is just so everybody knows and we'll discuss it in the open board. So anyway, we can get into those.
We do the presentation.
Exactly, yeah, this is the presentation, but that's the kind of discussion that maybe it's worth having.
I have one, one visit will be coming up. So if we all tune into finance, that's actually okay, we just can't all speak and we can't decide anything. So don't feel that you can't tune into finance because you can view anything.
Yeah, it's a public.
But it's a public meeting anyways, right?
Well, it's a public meeting, it's now, you can participate in a meeting, but only finance committee members can go.
Correct.
That makes me a little uncomfortable, but I'm not a open meeting law expert. I just.
Well, I guess the limitation.
We don't deliberate.
We can deliberate if things are not agenda.
So we're in a meeting and I speak up and I make my opinion very clear, oh, we look for it. Anyway, I'm not the expert, I just, I'm a little more conscious on that.
But if your opinion is about something that's in the agenda for finance, then it's okay. You're not voting.
I would, myself, I would just walk.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Don, I, I agree. I think if you, if you come and write your questions down on the side and then, you know, you can email Leanna and I.
Right.
I think that is probably safer, I mean, and, and just have those that are on finance. This is, we're getting all the numbers more, the design and estimate of the building for the 17th meeting and then the 15th is finance, anybody who wants to come observe, so they get it.
Okay. I'll check in with Sheila to get, get them official. Make sure when we set the rules for the finance, for that finance.
Be conservative.
Be conservative.
I'm always conservative on that one. It's a thousand dollar fine and they levy it all the time. Conservative.
Conservative is good, yeah. And also if, in worst case, if you break, if you violate all the meeting law, they can say, well, have the meeting again, start, start discussion over.
So more, since you're here, welcome. I hope you were able to hear, I know we had some issues with the audio, but if you heard anything from development that you didn't hear, that you're so excited that you want to tell us about or?
I listened to the whole thing and I think Alan covered everything really, the alumni piece and that event where we had to kick off the campaign. I had a few pictures from before people really showed up, so. Yeah, no, things are, things are really cranking along if it works out well, Marcy, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you for coming, making your way here, even with your conflicts. Anything else before we adjourn? I do want to take this opportunity, number one, to thank you all for coming in person. I'm glad to hear that it was positive and we want to do more of this. I want to thank those of you that stay all the extra hours that you could have been doing this from home, you know, both mics, Sarah, and Leanna's been in the hot seat of all night.
Yeah. We appreciate you.
So thank you for the long hours, thank you for the effort trying to problem solve the audio and the recording and whatnot. Thank you. So I can thank you by wrapping it up, so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Roger.
Those are yours, Sarah.
All in favor? Anybody again? The motion passed.
See you in a couple hours, Mike.